Counselwoman Perkins-Augustine, Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Jacas.
Here.
Councilman Grover.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Sedeno.
Here.
Councilman Gorman.
Here.
Councilman Mazza.
Here.
President.
Here. This is a regular conference of the City Council as incorporated in the annual meetings notice of 2012, which was filed in the City Clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2011, and sent to the Star-Lager and Home News Tribune in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law of New Jersey. I will now open the public speaking portion of the meeting. Is there anyone who would wish to address City Council may do so at this time? Once again, is there anyone who would wish to address City Council may do so at this time? Seeing none, I close the public speaking portion of the meeting. We will now move on to new papers.
Here.
Recognize Counselwoman Perkins-Augustine.
Counselwoman.
All right. How are you?
Letter dated February 15, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Motorola Communications and Electronics Inc., Warton, New Jersey, for the purchase of communications equipment and accessories for various departments for the period of February 1, 2012 through January 31, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $75,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated February 16, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Store Tractor Company, Branchburg, New Jersey, for the purchase of ground equipment for the Department of Public Works for the period of February 15, 2012 through December 27, 2012, at a cost not to exceed $50,000 under the Somerset County Co-op Contract.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated February 21, 2012, from the Chief Financial Officer advising that additional grants may be appropriated in 2012 state fiscal year budget by Budget Amendments, Chapter 159.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated February 21, 2012, from the Chief Financial Officer recommending that City Council consider the approval of a refunding bond ordinance for general obligations refunding bond series 2012 for the purpose to capture core savings to the taxpayers of the city by refinancing existing debt service obligations for the outstanding fall of general improvement bond series 2003 at a cost not to exceed $8.8 million.
Any comments?
Mr. President, did we just do this refinancing once again about a year ago?
Correct, yes. Every time the interest rates decrease, we petition local government services to...
Very good, thank you.
How much are we saving?
Um, we don't know that at the moment. Um, we're still seeking approval from the local finance board, but once I have that information on the savings hoping.
Any other comments? Okay, put it on.
Letter dated February 21, 2012, from the Chief Financial Officer advising that an application is required to be filed with the local finance board in order to finance the city's general obligation refunding bond series 2012 in an amount not to exceed $8.8 million.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated February 21, 2012, from the Chief Financial Officer recommending that the City Council of the City of Elizabeth hereby request the Director of the Division of Local Finance to make the following estimated corrections in the 2012 municipal budget to account for the city's local share of grants, Chapter 159, approved subsequent to the adopted budget. Matching funds, city share from $867,050 to $851,050. Local share, assistance to firefighters from zero to $16,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated February 14, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to amend the October 25, 2011 resolution authorizing the December 1, 2011 contract between the city and the Elizabethport Presbyterian Center specifically for funds to defray costs incurred for the agency's Black History Month program to increase the contract by an amount not to exceed $1,500.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated February 16, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to authorize a resolution for the Developing Women for the 21st Century Program honoring National Women's History Month. Funds to be used to defray rental costs at Union County College Elizabeth I Kellogg Building, where the event will take place in the amount of $1,250.
Any comments?
I do, Mr. President.
Counselwoman Grover?
The council in whole is agreeing to spend this money. I ask in the future if the Flyers could add list to City Council of Elizabeth, just as a general thing. I know Counselwoman Patricia Perkins-Augustine is one of the sponsors also, but at the bottom, maybe they could just Councilman of the City Council of the City of Elizabeth, City Council of Elizabeth, something like that.
Certainly, yes.
We don't all have to be mentioned by name. I don't mean that. I mean just...
Yeah. City Council.
But we need to do that for all events that take place in your individual wards. It does never say City Council as a whole.
But here the cities, here the cities spend the money.
Well, cities spend money on those other events too, whether it be in kind or...
I agree with you. I agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
I think every event, every event where the City Council has proprietary money, we should have our name mentioned. Not very specific, I'm just saying in general.
Anything else, Counselor? Counselor, yeah?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And that same might, as I was stating, any event that takes place in the city, when you use the park, Kellogg Park, any of those other activities, the city budget money is allocated to upkeep those parks, just like the recreation centers. So I'm just saying, we just have a uniform courtesy and put the City of Elizabeth on all those, on all those events as well, when you have individual events in your ward.
Anything else, Counselor?
When the recreation department does things, whether it be the Easter egg hunt or basketball events or whatever there is, if the city's staff is being used, if recreation is being used, and public works are being used, then they should say it was the City Council on those as well, in addition to Councilman Manny Grover or Councilman, or Councilman Carlos Sedeno or Councilman Bill Gorman, it also should have it as the City Council.
Whenever the city, and I agree with Councilmen of the first ward, whenever the city is involved, I think it should, responsible paying for it, it should have, you know, whatever event it should be.
Well, who am I paying for is someone on the Development Block Line. Just like when you give money to other agencies, they don't owe you any money. You get into that one block, right?
Anything else, Counselor? Any other comments? Okay, put it on.
Letter dated February 16, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary to discharge the Neighborhood Stabilization Program One Mortgage with brand-new day, 176 First Street, Elizabeth, with property located at 217-219 First Street. The project is canceled.
Any comments?
It should say First Street on there.
It does, First Street.
But under property, there was a typo, it says 217-219 Street. So I'll make sure, First Street.
Letter dated February 16, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to modify the rental housing program loan to Y Homes, Inc., and YMCA of Eastern Union County specifically to increase the loan by $229,771.25 from $779,867 to $1,9638.25.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated February 17, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting to amend the October 25, 2011 resolution authorizing the February 16, 2012 contract between the city and the Elizabeth Development Company specifically to increase the contract by reprogramming $15,233 from the Elizabethport Presbyterian Project for its facade.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated February 17, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting the City Council consider determining that there is a need for low-income housing in the City of Elizabeth at the property located at 313-319 West Jersey Street. That the proposed project will help meet this existing housing need and to utilize the sample resolution.
Any comments, Counselor McKeenan?
This is the first time I've seen this. My concern is that that area is very congested. In the last five years, I've been at either zoning or planning several times because neighbors rose in oppositions to the project. So have they applied for either zoning or planning approval yet?
I do not know, but I will certainly find out.
But the thing is that if the project does not require a large number of variances and so forth, that would be reasonable, but if it's totally out of scope, I'm sure that the residents will be very upset and I may wind up having to support them at either the zoning or planning board in opposition to a project which is outsized. In other words, if the project is reasonable, it's very much needed, but if it's too big, it could be a problem.
I will certainly research this in fact, you have a question.
Thank you. Any other comments? Put it on.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Look, confuse them. So this is a proposed project?
Correct.
Yes. So all we're doing is just preparing a resolution determining, determination of the, that's it?
Yes.
There's no funds going?
Correct.
It doesn't seem that way.
No, it's not at this point, no. And I'm not saying that I anticipate, but I don't know.
I'm just suggesting that it's better to do our homework in advance rather than have a project that is too big down the road that needs addressing. But thank you for doing it.
Counselor McQuesto?
No, Mr. President, just to say, I completely understand what Counselor McKeenan is saying. However, that determination would be made by another autonomous body, zoning board or other planning board.
Correct.
And of course, we can speak on behalf of the project or against the project, but, you know, and I agree that we should do the homework and know exactly what's going on, but the final determination will be made by that other entity, not the City Council.
Absolutely. Any other comments? Put it on.
Letter dated February 14, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Excel Environmental Resources, Inc., North Brunswick, New Jersey, for a preliminary assessment of slay apartment.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated February 7, 2012, from the Director of Public Works, requesting authorization to comply with the Requesting Equipment Law from Helios Construction, Inc., and recommending awarding a contract to P.A. Contractors, Inc., Kearney, New Jersey, for the Elizabeth Avenue Streetscape Phase Two at a cost of $419,211.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated February 15, 2012, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to HBC Electric, Roselle, New Jersey, for electrical maintenance and emergency repair service at various public buildings for a period of two years at a cost of $446,642.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated February 17, 2012, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Hatchmont McDonald, Milburn, New Jersey, to provide construction management services for the construction of the Midtown Sewers Western Interceptor Project at a cost not to exceed $980,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated February 2, 2012, from the Fire Director, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply accepting sign, all appropriate documents for the 2011 FEMA staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant, which will allow for the hiring of 25 additional firefighters to enable the department to provide more efficient and effective safety services to the city.
Any comments?
$3 million.
Counselwoman Perkins-Augustine.
Bridget, I know we're contemplating on putting on a new plan for the fire department. Is there any rate this $3 million, if it's sold, if we are granted, can we use that to pay for the class that we're going to bring on, even though it's, you know, it's after the grant period?
I will certainly confirm it. It's my understanding that it is depending upon when the award is made, it's for that calendar year, so if we're notified within 2012 that we were successful, it should cover hirings through 2012. So yes, is the short answer, but I will certainly confirm that for you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselman Mazza?
This 25 additional firemen, is additional comparing to the one that we already selected to go to academy or the same number?
Um, at this point in time, we are, those that we're processing currently are countering the existing budget. Ideally, this will help offset that, but depending upon when the award is, if we can't use the money for that, then it would be 25 additional. But at this point in time, we anticipate, but also, we haven't hired, there has been, we're in the process of hiring, so no one's been actually hired yet, so...
So 25 in the process of getting hired?
Uh, not that many, no. We're, they're in the process of interviewing and going through a class between 16 and 20.
Oh, 16, okay. And that should take place between now and...
Uh, well, that, right now, that's anticipated to take place between now and the next several months as they're going through the process. And then in additional, we're submitting the application and hopefully we hear about it in 2012 so we can offset those.
Good news. Any other comments? Put it on.
Letter dated February 2, 2012, from Kleinfeld, East, Inc. County, New Jersey, on behalf of ExxonMobil Environmental Services Company, is requesting an encroachment permit to install four soil borings in the access road to the Department of Public Works Maintenance Facility and one monitoring well in the Atlantic Street right-of-way in the vicinity of the access road to the City of Elizabeth Department of Public Works Maintenance Facility.
Any comments?
That's the old Spencer Gas station, Exxon, Spencer? We're still dealing with the...
Exxon's still responsible. Wow. How's that for you? Haven't had a Exxon there in 30 years.
Yeah. Put it on.
Letter dated February 1, 2012, from Ambassador Carlos Orlando, Councilman of Uruguay, New York. New York is offering a sculpture or bust of General Jose Artigas to the City of Elizabeth as a gift from the Uruguayan government and community residing in Elizabeth to be placed in Winfield Scott Park.
Very nice. Any comments?
Are they going to provide the cost to put it in?
They're just, we're just getting started.
I raised this and Counselman Questa, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I raised this because Counselman Questa and I have been had this discussion. They moved the Jose Marti bust from Jackson Park up to, they spent a lot of money with the new monument, and I know you guys raised a lot of money to do that. That wasn't the city's money, that was, they raised the money. And I know there's still an issue with the, getting rid of the old monument downtown, so I'm just wondering if they're just offering us the bust and want us to build it. That's going to be very expensive. The bust may be cheaper than you...
Anything else, Counselor?
No. Counselor McQuesto? Mr. President, I was going to discuss that in the once around, because Counselman Grover and I have talked about it several times, and I think you kind of come up with a decision, and I have an idea.
Okay.
That's not the reason why I... I know you guys spent a lot of money with that. He's got one. He's got one? Herb like this.
Councilman Grover has requested a personalized handicap parking space at 414 Marshall Street. Councilman Mazza has requested a personalized handicap parking space at 622 Fourth Avenue to be placed on the agenda. And that is, I'm saying, it for me, I'm done.
Does that, could I be excused?
Yeah, just one thing, Counselor, before you leave. You also have with you that Yolanda gave out at the end there, there were two pieces of information. One has to do with the Roberts Rules and avoiding the use of members' names during debate. You know, it's just, it's a formality, and it also prevents personal attacks from taking place, so please, I'm going to be asking that, you know, we avoid that, that we call each other, either the Councilman of the Ward, or the Councilperson at Large, or the previous speaker, or some other way to, you know, indicate who you are speaking to, okay? Also, I've set there for you so we can take a look at, a number of council members has expressed interest in looking at developing an ordinance where the audio and videotaping of our open public meetings. The City Clerk was able to uncover something that was proposed back in 2001 in ordinance that was defeated at that time. And while the public has every right to be here, to take these meetings, participate, you know, and share whatever information they have with us, council can also regulate how the tapings will take place, you know, at our meetings. So I'm asking everyone to, you know, take a look at this, and if you have any suggestions or any ideas, please forward them to council, and that way we can have something by our next pre-conference meeting that we can sit down and discuss and hopefully adopt. Yeah, Counselman Jacas?
Are you talking about this camera, or are you talking about the camera that's brought in by Curtis Wallace?
Citizens, citizens that wish to come and tape open public meetings. As a citizen.
Because this was put together because of the fact that Cable Vision brought a camera in here, and they were taped in these meetings. So that's how this came about.
I didn't thought it was because of one of the council members.
Well, it, that also caused it, and it was also Don Kavas that caused it, but it was actually Cable Vision who came in with a camera also.
But they give us access to anything they tape. I'm pretty sure they do.
If anybody could take a look at it, and at the next regular conference, we'll discuss it. All right, we'll do the once around. Counselwoman Perkins-Augustine? Nothing, okay. Counselman Mazza?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselman Gorman?
Pass.
Counselman Keenan?
Pass.
Counselman Grover?
Pass.
Counselman Questo?
Yes. Counselman Grover has a concern, and I think he had a, I got a message from you, but it wasn't clear as to what exactly you recommended, what was left of the statue. I want to inform you, Mr. President, that I have contacted the members of the original committee, I was part of that committee, I specifically contacted Attorney Julio Sanchez, who was pretty much in charge of that committee at the time. I know that Counselman Grover has spoken to him, and I have too on several occasions, and for whatever reason, he and the rest of the committee have not been able to really come to a decision as to what to do. And I had expressed to Counselman Grover that I was a legitimate member of that committee, and knowing that there is a problem and nothing is happening, I would be willing to reach out to Julio Sanchez again, but simply to indicate that I'm recommending to City Council that that property be taken over by our Public Works Department and do whatever is necessary, because if it's presenting a problem in that particular area, and we have reached out to some of those members, it's a long story by the way things were handled with that statue or not entirely the way I had done it, but needless to say, there was a lot of friction, there were different, a different, a huge difference of opinion as to what to do. Some people were not in favor of moving the statue of where it is now, I was, because it's definitely the best location. So the remaining part of that statue, something should be done about it, because it's really becoming an eyesore, and, right, vandalism and people are...
They have a wrought iron gate which is falling apart.
Correct.
And it's just, it's just a pedestal with nothing up.
Right, and at one point it's going to become dangerous, and I brought this to the attention of Mr. Sanchez, and he promised me he was going to talk to some of the committee members, but in all fairness to him, the problem is that those committee members are not in agreement as to what to do, and I, you know, at this point, I would be willing to write the letter myself.
Well, they, just, if I may, Mr. President. The suggestion that Mr. McCarty had was, city at this point should write a letter to committee saying, look, either you guys get rid of this thing, or do something with it, or the city's going to go in and take care of it. And I think that's the way it's got to be approached. It's been three years, four years now?
Yes, yes.
And it looks horrible, and the weather is just tearing this thing apart, the plates, the marble plates, that former thing are falling off. I mean, somebody's going to get hurt.
And it's really a shame, because part of the original idea was donate part of the monument to the Keelunka, because it's, there's history behind it, but no one is willing to...
I know there's an expense issue.
Yes.
That's part of it. And if it's an expense issue, then maybe this might be the way out. Let us just, oh, we're going to tear it down and just throw it away, I mean, that's the problem.
I understand. Part of it could be saved, and I agree with you 100 percent.
So what would we like to do, to move forward? Do you want to contact...
I would, no, I have done that already. I think that we should do it officially.
I think there's got to be a letter, Yolanda, maybe there should be a letter from, I guess, from City Council, I guess, is the only thought we have, addressed to the committee saying, you know, you guys have been, it's been three, four years, nothing's been done with this ending.
And I think it should indicate that I have personally contacted them several times, and it's time for us to get an answer.
You know, either they're going to improve it, get it back to where it was, or do something with it, or we're just going to go in and get rid of it, because we're...
Questo, maybe you could assist the City Clerk in writing that letter, please?
I would be happy to.
We just, if you remember, last week, we approved on special, on suspension rules, a grant, an application for a grant, which is going to include renovating that whole park, the sidewalks, the trees, and, you know, and this thing's sitting there right now.
My concern is if it's becoming a liability.
Yeah, that's my concern.
If somebody gets hurt, then we really need to take some action sooner than later.
So a lot of kids come through, they're, you know, they're climbing, it's just, it's just a problem.
Yeah, let's see, one more.
Okay, so we'll do that then?
I will talk to the City Clerk, give her all the details. Just so you know, I think the letter should be sent to two individuals, who pretty much run into committee Julio Sanchez and Alina, I forget her name now.
Connaught, Colina?
Alie Colina, Alie Colina, because they were pretty much the two that were really involved with it, with the initial project, and there were a lot of other individuals, including myself, that really took the lead, and it was finally decided that it would be moved to where it is now, so we should really...
We've put yellow tape around it, City Yard guys did, but it...
Should the letter come from a Counselman Questo, or from the City Clerk, saying that Counselman Questa asked her to reach out to them or something?
We're doing this as a whole, as a body, I think it's a body.
I don't agree with Yolanda on something.
I think it should be done as a body, because obviously he's tried in his own individual...
We don't know anything about, right.
Do we know how much money it would cost the city to take the thing down and dispose of it?
John said it's not, because we're just going to tear it down, it's not expensive.
I understand, but we've still got to dispose of it, and it costs money, and it's taxpayer dollars. Not that I want to keep anything up that's unsafe, but the thing is, is that put up privately on city property and, you know, now the city has to tear it down with taxpayer dollars. I don't know. Well, we can find that out from the Public Works Director, but again, I think the more pressing issue here is somebody gets hurt, then the city's responsible.
And be honest with you, Counselman, I don't know if the city paid for it at the time, this is going back, I don't know how many years?
This goes back many years, and the city's definitely played a role a lot of the time.
I think the city probably did it themselves, I think the city put that up. It might have been city taxpayer dollars that put it up. It might have been city taxpayer dollars that put it up to begin with, from my personal opinion.
Is that, George, is that something that the city should have been doing? Putting up a private monument?
Well, if the city put it up, it's not a private monument, so we need to get to the bottom of who put it up, whether it was a private group or the city group, so this is a...
Yeah. Yeah, I'd just like to know what the cost of it to tear it down is.
I mean, I don't know if we can charge the group for whatever the city, cost the city incurred to take it down.
Let's find out if we put it up, put it up, and it's really not even the group's monument to give it, then we just, then it's, it's a moot point.
If we put it up, it's probably dead.
I believe it.
It's a good lie going after that monument.
Anything else, Counselor?
No, that's it, thank you.
Counselor McKeon? Counselor Jack?
Yeah, Mr. President, if I could ask the business administrator a question?
Sure.
Bridget, I don't know if you know that there's a new mandate out with regards to fluoride being placed in water statewide, do you know how much that will cost the city?
I will check, it's my understanding that the water utility will incur the cost, but I will find out if, what, what is any direct cost will, will be...
Because it, the, I'm reading right here where it says that the, uh, that the league is not, is not behind this, that it's gonna cost municipalities money in order to, for fluoride, the entire water system.
I will certainly find that out for you.
So, it's actually an unfunded mandate, that's what he's saying, all right?
Anything else, Counselor? Counselor woman?
Just to add to what Counselor McJack was saying about the unfunded mandate for for data water, can we just send a resolution opposing this? I don't think it passed, I think it's just went, I think it just went through the committee and before it passed...
It's final action.
It's a mandatory for the bill, it's advanced on Thursday, February 9.
It's going for final action in both houses.
Right, it doesn't say when. Can we do a resolution upholding this, for number one, because it is an unfunded mandate, and number two, fraudation of water, there's been lots of studies proving that it doesn't really help with the retardation of teeth, doesn't prevent it, but it may cause other issues, other environmental issues to the body that have not been fully discovered. So, not only is it, might not do what they claim it does, but it may do more harm than good, so we definitely need not to support this at all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else? Okay. Motion to adjourn? So, move meeting adjourned.